Call the work session to order for eight, seven, twenty-five at five o'clock. Before we get started, I just want to say to Mr. Blackaby, staff, you know, teachers, parents, students, and community, thanks for a great start at school. I mean, I know we always have some issues, had a couple of little bus hiccups, but not like anything we've had in the past. And kids got home late, but very few. We have the internet now, so not our fault. But thank you to everybody, especially in the community, for your patience. And the traffic always picks up, obviously, the first day of school. And everybody gets worked out of carpool and going through the lines. So we appreciate everybody's patience and help with that. So with that said, I'll turn over Mr. Blackaby.
Yeah, and on top of that, we had over half our schools without internet. And our staff, our teachers did a tremendous job of navigating the first real day and a half without any internet and communication. So they did a phenomenal job as we were boarding.
I bet this business still has an overhead projector.
Well, yeah.
Ray Smarke.
Well, we'll go into the agenda. And we don't have a financial update for this month, just due to the closeout of the year. You know, Ms. Cuddy does have, you know, if there's any more questions about the millage rate or any of that, she could entertain any of those questions. But if not, we'll move on to the East Plus update.
Good evening, everybody. I'll go ahead and start with the East Plus projects first. College of Coastal Georgia Performing Arts Center. They're continuing to make great progress with the construction of that. All of the waterproofing for the building and the exterior stucco is complete. The coping around the entire building is also, has been completed. All of the lower level windows on the front of the building have been installed. None with the arches up on the second floor have been installed yet, but the lower ones are in. They are continuing to sheet rock the inside. And they have one wall left to sheet rock. And again, the, also, the, they're running in-wall and overhead electrical and installing sprinklers as well. And again, the projected completion date is January. If things get behind, February. Moving on to the Glendale Elementary Replacement. Again, that job has been broken up. That school is being broken up into three phases. The site clearing, phase one, site development, phase two, which we'll talk about a little bit later in the agenda. And then site three is the building construction. We're still in phase one with the site clearing. The area where the actual school will go, playground, field, parking lot, that area has been cleared. And will be completed by next Friday. Mr. Tooten, who is here as well, he informed me that we're still waiting on some approvals from the Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission for the clearing of the remaining roadways to the site. Any questions about those two projects before I move on to our capital outlay funded project?
I've got one about the college. And it's not anything too terribly important. Do they have a, do you have any pictures or a time lapse? Are they doing time lapse photos or anything that you could show us next?
Yes.
It'd have to be next meeting, but the committee might like to say. We've all been by there and everybody's seen it, but.
I can do that next meeting.
Something like that, you could show real quick, that'd be kind of cool.
Definitely.
Yeah, so you can show it from inside, we'd kind of need to show them.
You let me know your schedule and I will set it up. Yeah, you're gonna need a hard hat and a vest, we got you. We'll get you taken care of.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I'll have the pictures at next meeting.
Alright, thank you.
Our capital outlay funded projects, the BHS Fieldhouse Edition. Again, that is progressing very well. Also, they're in the installation of the, continuing the installation of the steelwork and the welding. They've started actually laying the brick. It's about three to four feet high around the entire facility. And we were able to match the brick up pretty good with the existing brick on the Brunswick High School and on the existing fieldhouse. So it looks really good. They will be laying brick and mortar for the next five weeks. And then on Monday, the plan is to begin the tectum roof decking. And on that project, December is still the projected completion date. And then lastly, the Board of Education Office, Wing Three is complete. Subs are now just finishing up punch list items. The furniture shipment will arrive on August 12th. And the final shipment of furniture should arrive on the following Monday, August 18th. Once all the furniture is installed and we get everybody moved over, we'll begin with the abatement. And that should take a couple of weeks. And then after the abatement, then we'll start demo. I figured the abatement will start late August and the demo should start sometime early September on that project. Any questions on those two? Alright, moving right along. We'll go to the Gooood Report. And look at our collections. And you can see we're in our third collection of East Plus Five. And we took in three million, five hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents. And this amount is sixty-one thousand, three dollars and sixty-nine cent more than we took in at this time last year. And as you can see, for the three months that we've collected, it's been in an upward trend, a little more this time than the last two months. And then, of course, our next collection will have the Buc-Ee's in there from July one to July thirty-one. So it'll be interesting to see what the difference will be from these previous three months to that month with all of the holiday travel, fourth of July, and so forth and so on. So any questions about the Gooood Report? Alright.
We also have Mr. Demmsdale here, if anybody has any in-depth questions about it or dig into it.
Alrighty. We'll keep rolling. Next on the agenda is the capital outlay contract for Goodyear Elementary School Greer and the GA Building slash Auditorium. I'm asking the board to approve the capital outlay contract for fiscal year 2027. The facility improvement applications have been submitted to the state to receive capital outlay funds for the renovation of Goodyear Greer and the GA Building slash Auditorium. Couple of months ago, back in June, I think it was, you all approved our local, our five-year local facility plan. Once that was approved, that made us eligible to be able to apply for funding. And those are three of the school sites that we applied for funding for to have those schools renovated. And once the report comes back from the Atlanta office, you all will sign off on it, we will send it, and funds will not be released until after July one, 2026 for that. And I have attached that.
Do you want to open up, so you can see the amounts real quick?
Yes. If we'll go to the, we'll go to the project summary page and you'll be able to look at the amount that we're getting from the state on each facility. This is for Glen Academy. And again, this is for the GA Building. If you look at that amount where it says eligible state funds, total eligibility minus required local, that one point nine six three one oh four, that's what the state will allow us. And it is derived from the amount of earned instructional units we get per building plus the contingency clause, plus the architect's fees. And they come up with that number there. So for Glen Academy, GA Building, the state will give us that one point nine million dollars. I'll move down to.
And that was the total of five, is that what I read? Is that the budget for that building? The five millions?
Well, that's a, that's kind of, that's an estimated amount.
So it's two million out of the five projected?
Yeah, it will probably be more. That doesn't include like replacing the seat. Stuff such as that is not included in this. That's considered furniture fixtures, that's not included in this. So things such as that would have to be added to it, so.
And then we'll go to page seventeen. Project summary for Goodyear Elementary School. And you can see that amount, it's a little bit less, it's nine hundred eight thousand, fifty-one dollars. And then on the last one is page twenty-five, which will be for Greer Elementary School. And it is one point one oh four two twenty-six that we are eligible to receive state funding for those three projects. And so it's a total of just under five million dollars for those projects. I'm sorry, four million dollars for those projects. Three million, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and four hundred eighty-one dollars is the total that we are eligible to receive.
I know we've talked about it a few times, and I'm sure it's in this document, but just in a nutshell, we can probably figure out what we're gonna do with the auditorium. It needs some, needs some work. But as far as Greer and Goodyear, what are the major things that we're doing?
So, I mean, with this, we're kind of obligated to do flooring, paint, new lighting, ceiling tiles, pretty much everything you can touch in a room is obligated to that. Greer's got a new roof, so that would not be included. And then the modification money is, that's for primarily HVAC work. It'll be replacing all the classroom units and the large, you know, it's like for the media center and such, as well as restoring modifications.
Do they do the ceilings too?
Yes.
So are these built on a cycle, fifteen year, twenty year cycle?
And sorry, Mr. Haywood.
No, you're good.
Yeah, to become eligible for the renovation line on that, the building has to be at the twenty-year mark. So in Greer is just past that. Modification money, most of that is tied to like a fifteen-year timeframe. Roof and the HVAC system, they all have a little different time clock on them, but for the full funding from the state, it has to be over twenty years.
You can get kitchen hoods, serving lines, HVAC, as you said, and bus canopies. Whatever you check off that you want to replace or renovate, you just apply for it and it's calculated.
Got you. Thank you.
Alright, moving on. Phase two.
Real quick on the capital outlay, once it's approved, is it, it's guaranteed?
Yes.
It's, it's, there's nothing that happens at the state level that they say, ah, well.
No, once they approve it and y'all sign off on it, after July one, 2026.
This money is, this money is allocated in the budget that was signed for this year. And it's approved at the three hundred and fifty million level.
Three seventy-five.
Three seventy-five million level. And there's a calculation done on that. But anyway, so that money is now in the, it's now in the budget for the state. This application, the state sells bonds based off of these applications.
Got it. In our phase two site development for the Glendale Replacement, I'm asking the board to approve Ridge Enterprises to complete the site development for the Glendale Replacement in the amount of three million, eight hundred eighty thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and zero cents. Site development bids were advertised in the Brunswick News, the Glen County Schools website, and on the Georgia Procurement Registry. Sealed proposals were accepted and opened on July thirty-first of 2025. Proposals were received from Ridge Enterprises and the Sea Island Land Development Company out of Charleston, South Carolina. The rating scales are attached to that. Mr. Tooten, would you like to add anything about those?
The good news is that the bids were relatively close together. We required quantities of fill, and they were close to our estimates and close together. So it looks like it's in good shape.
So asking that we approve for the site development for Ridge Enterprises in the listed amount.
Did you say that was from Charleston?
Yeah, Sea Island Land Development Company, yes, they're out of Charleston.
But Ridge is out of?
They're local.
They're local?
Yes. Yep. And that is the company that's currently doing the site clearing. So it'll be, it should be a very seamless transition if approved. And the last one is the construction management recommendation. I'm asking the board to approve RH Tyson Construction of Blackshear, Georgia in the amount of two million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for construction management services for the Glendale Elementary Replacement. The RFQ was advertised for construction management services for the construction of the Glendale Elementary School Replacement. The opportunity was advertised on the Glen County Schools website and the Georgia Procurement Registry. And again, the rating scales are attached for those companies or construction management teams that submitted their proposals.
So they'll be working with our architect?
Yes.
Yes.
As Mr. Tooten is here, and like I said, if you have any questions.
As far as paperwork, getting everything done, at a, at a good time. Making sure all the proper paperwork is submitted, for the drawdowns. If they can do all that, and a phone call away. That's important.
If I remember right, we've had experience with most of the ones that bid. So, and RH Tyson scored the highest on the local participation. I know that's something we look at a lot, so.
And they're currently doing the board office renovation as well as the BHS Fieldhouse Edition.
But they have capacity to take on this part too?
Yes. We're hopeful they finish Wing Four mid-January or so. And they'll be able to give us their undivided attention.
That's true, okay, yeah.
And then the field house should be done December. So they should be able to give us their undivided attention.
Has Tyson done a full school? Or, I mean, this is a little different than a field house. Okay, they've built an entire school from ground up, okay.
Two or three.
I didn't realize, wow, okay.
Alright, any more questions, Ms. Haywood? We'll move on to Ms. Haywood.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
This evening, we're asking the board to consider two policies, one of which is new. The policy is the transfer and withdrawal policy. It is new, and it is a result of House Bill two sixty-eight. And just to give you some context, this bill was originated as a result of the tragedy that occurred in Barrow County at Appalachia High School. The purpose of this bill was to strengthen state laws that were already in place and supplement federal laws with regard to the records, that student records, that are needed when we talk about student enrollment and the obligation of parents to report information as well as other entities that have information that's pertinent to student enrollment. This policy is basically going to be our way of following state law. It is, it involves stringent timelines and processes for how records are to be submitted, as well as a review process in order to assist in making enrollment decisions. If students have felonies, they have to, parents have to make us aware of that if it's a designated A or B felony. If they have any suspensions, long-term suspensions or expulsions from other districts, if they're involved in any type of disciplinary hearings, if they have any pending tribunal hearings from another district. Those are things that have already been in law. This particular law is really kind of streamlining and pulling all of those together. It also now goes down into elementary school. That was not something that was necessarily required for discipline records to be submitted with transfers at the elementary level. But this is basically a policy for us to be able to put those systems in place to ensure that we're following those timelines and following state law.
So before they come in, we've got that in our hands, is what you're saying? Or that's what we want?
Yes, so the way the law is written, we have to have those records within a certain amount of time. If we don't have those records, we can do what's called a provisional enrollment, which means that we would enroll them virtually. And that would be in the form of Google Classroom or Edge Annuity until we were able to receive those records to ensure that those things were not in place in order to make the best decision in terms of where those students would be enrolled. Also, part of that would involve having a transition meeting if a student had an IEP or a 504, looking at, they had any psychological records, evaluations, that would involve us looking at some supportive services or additional services that they would need. But essentially, yes, we would have to enroll them, but it would be a provisional enrollment until all of that information was collected. But the way that the law is written, there is a stringent timeline. So we have to receive those records within a certain amount of time. In the past, that wasn't necessarily happening. But now, we have to have those records within five days.
More teeth in there.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's good.
That's correct.
Very good.
Yes, ma'am. So this would be.
Is there an affidavit that all transfers have to sign to say, listen, my child's whatever? An angel, you know? So how, I mean, what are the teeth in it? So if somebody just lies, and you find out three months into the semester, they have a felony?
Yes, sir, that's part of the provision. That, and actually, part of, there's, there's several layers to this law that includes an MOU with our law enforcement agencies where they have to report information, any criminal activity that involves any students. It's multi-layered. I just didn't want to get into a lot of depth. But this really is gonna govern how we collect records when students are transferring in, as well as what we release to districts. And as far as the teeth, that's a great question. The state has put in place, they're creating through our first, well, through our state RESSAs, a privacy officer position that would be responsible for ensuring that districts were following the law. And if they are not, there will be consequences and things that would be done through those, those entities. But yes, there are, there are provisions in place to ensure that districts are being cooperative.
Does everybody transfer in now on a provisional? Until we get the records? Or is there like, you mean, do you just let everybody come in provisionally? And then, I don't know, I'm just asking, I mean, it may be too much to.
Yeah, I mean, some we're getting, we'll get the records.
Yes, some, like most of the ones that we've received even recently, we're getting the records within the time.
Okay.
But these are typically for those that are questionable, where there may be pending criminal charges or there may be pending, there may be an adjudication, felony adjudication that just recently happened. Or say there's someone that's coming from a district where they just recently were expelled. Or they were, they recently violated the code of conduct and there's a pending tribunal. And now they're trying to transfer into our district. All of that information, we would have to have prior to even accepting them into our district. So this is our way.
Some of the teeth within the state comes from the fact that, I guess, from like, the school system will be punished for not sending.
That's correct. That's correct.
With not the student.
It comes back to really the school system. And that's where that officer, within all the RESSAs, that's kind of, that's their job is to not only make sure we're receiving, but make sure we are sending what we are supposed to send in the required amount of time.
So they only can be a provision for like five days?
If we don't receive those records within that time period, right. And it's up to ten days that we would keep that student provisionally.
So you can't play for Coach Haywood.
So we're asking the board if you would consider this policy and allow it to sit on the table for thirty days? And if you would consider approving it at your September meeting? But again, this is just our way of how we're going to follow state, state law.
I have one more question.
Certainly.
And I've been trying to just skim it to see if I can find the answer. But as far as disciplinary or criminal action, are we gonna have, I mean, not maybe all the details, but know the nature of what it is? Like if it's a school threat versus if it's a.
Yes, ma'am.
Too many tardies?
Yes, ma'am. It specifies the criminal activity, if it is threats, if it's involving weapons, any of those things. That's why they ask specifically about whether it's a Class A or a Class B felony.
Okay. I figured it would be in there somewhere, given what kind of brought this bill on, so.
Absolutely. And just to kind of further answer your question, that also is going to be specified in the MOU. There's a memorandum of understanding that district, we'll be receiving a model MOU by October from the state DOE. They're supposed to provide that to districts that we work with our local law enforcement agencies to talk about what information they would provide. So when you talk about, you know, what types of crimes are we talking about? You know, if there was something involving weapons or if there was something involving a threat that might have been made outside of the school system, those kinds of things, we would receive that information.
So nature, do the, parents come with those documents in hand?
No, ma'am. Typically, when a student is transferring to your district, you send a records request to their previous district. And that is how we usually receive those records. Now, if we were talking about, in this case, if you're talking about criminal records or if there's, you know, adjudications or, you know, pending charges, those kinds of things, parents may have that information and they provide that information. We've had a couple of situations where that has happened and parents have been forthright in providing that information. But generally, that's information we would receive directly from their previous school district.
Do we ever have problems getting those records from other schools, districts?
In the past, most of our, most of our problems, quite honestly, have been receiving from other states. Not so much from districts in the state of Georgia. Just to be completely transparent with you.
That was gonna be my next question. If you come from Florida, I mean, we can't, this is a Georgia thing, we can't hold you accountable.
That is one of, that's one of the drawbacks.
in Florida's school system for not sending the records.
That's one of the drawbacks, Mr. Halsey, that's.
Can we deny the child access? If they don't volunteer, voluntarily brain, if the parents don't brain the records? I don't know, I know you really can't probably.
We can extend provisional enrollment.
We can extend a provisional enrollment. Yeah, we can extend a provisional enrollment until we have the information we need to be able to make the right decision on what's the best placement for that student.
We just don't do transfers.
No transfer.
Are there any other questions I can answer about this particular policy?
Would that would be considered a critical record?
Yes, and in the policy, they, they ask us to provide definitions so that as you read through it, you have clarity. So it, it actually has what are critical records and those are educational records and they're as defined in the law. So they talk about like IEPs, five oh fours, psychological records, criminal records, Class A, B felonies, et cetera.
I'd just have one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
You may have said this, but what about transferring in from a private school?
Yes, ma'am. It doesn't, the, the law doesn't necessarily talk about that, but it's still, it's still applicable if it's, if they're transferring in. We can still, we still have to request those same records.
Try to request that.
Yes, ma'am. Because if you're leaving a private school, coming to a public school, you now are, are, you know, have to follow the public school requirements.
Okay.
So yes, good question. So the second policy that we're asking you to consider, and I want to thank Mr. Madala for his support as we, there's a lot going on and want to make sure that we're in compliance with law. The second policy is already a current policy, is our Internet acceptable use policy. And we're wanting to make sure that we're in compliance with Senate Bill three fifty-one, which is the Protecting Georgia's Children from Social Media Act of two thousand twenty-four. The way that we set this up, Assembly allows us to be able to make the changes in policy that so that you all will see what was the previous language and what is the new language. So those things that are in red, that are crossed out, would be the things that we would redact. And then the things that are in blue would be the additions to make the policy current. So this policy was actually based on the protections, Internet protections of two thousand. And now we're bringing it up to par for two thousand twenty-four. Local boards actually have to have an updated policy by law by October one, twenty twenty-four. And school districts, local school districts are required to send a copy of that policy, said policy, to the Georgia Department of Education by October fifteenth, which is why we've asked you to consider this policy to lay on the table so that if you are able to approve, if you feel to approve it in September, we will meet the deadlines that are required by law. And the only major changes that are in this law is the prevention and prohibition of school equipment being used to access obscene material. It also includes procedures for how we address complaints and also measures for how we address violations of policy, either by students or by staff. So those are things that we've added into the policy based on Senate Bill three fifty-one and the requirements as per law.
I like when you say at school-related functions.
Yes, sir.
To capture everything.
Absolutely.
I drove my own car, it was a school-related function.
Yes, sir. Okay. All right, thank you. And then finally, this evening, wanted to give you an update on the Distraction Free Act, House Bill three forty, which is a new law that's coming into play. We wanted to talk about tonight just why distraction free is a new topic in the state of Georgia. It was, of course, created to minimize classroom distractions and off-task behavior to boost student engagement and learning and address mental health and well-being concerns. This is a trend that's happening across the nation. As of August fifth, I read an article that thirty-seven states in the United States have already implemented a ban for bell-to-bell instruction with, with phone devices and any Internet devices, just because of the reasons that were aforementioned. But the key elements to this law are simply, it's going to apply to public schools, grades K through eight. And it basically means no access to personal devices from bell to bell. And what they mean, what the law means by bell-to-bell instruction is from the first bell to the end of the school day. The devices that are included are smartphones, smartwatches, tablets, e-readers, headphones, earbuds, AI glasses, like the Ray-Ban AI glasses, or any devices with communication, Internet gaming, recording, messaging, video, or music capability. So that encompasses any of those types of devices. The law is broken out into, into steps. It went into law during the two thousand twenty-five legislative session, but they've allowed school districts kind of time to, to, to roll this out. By January one, we are required as a district to develop a policy as well as procedures for how we are going to implement. We're also required to make sure we're providing storage areas for phones. We're also required to come up with procedures for how we will handle off-site activities during the instructional day. That means like field trips, sporting activities, those types of things that happen during that bell-to-bell time as well as how we will handle emergency and parent communication protocols. Emergencies handled via school communication systems, that means parents being able to contact their kids by calling the school, calling the office, sending out communication using our communication devices, which includes Parent Square or if we have to send out messages, any other way by making phone calls to parents. Parents being able to contact the school and not necessarily contacting the student directly. And then having some type of progressive discipline in place for how we will handle violations of those requirements. The only exemption in the law for this is for students with an IEP or a five oh four plan that explicitly requires that a student has an electronic device. And an example of that would be if a student has diabetes and they're using their phone to measure their, their blood sugar levels with their Dexcom. That would be an example and that would be something that would be explicitly written into a plan, which would allow that student to have that device during the instructional day for that purpose. And finally, for tonight, our discipline actions for violations. We believe in giving students warnings, so first time, students will receive a warning. Second time, it will be confiscated by a staff member, returned at the end of the day. Third time, it will be taken to the office a parent will have to pick up. And of course, if there continues to be issues, then there may be a disciplinary referral as a result. But we wanted to be proactive, we didn't want to wait until July one, twenty twenty-six to implement. We wanted to make sure that we were pulling these things into place. And really, a lot of what we are doing is already in our student code of conduct. Things that we were already putting into place, K twelve, so. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all have as it relates to this.
I just have, oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
No, you go.
Okay.
Refer to the former teacher.
Right.
Now, I forgot what I was going to say. Wait a minute, oh, are individual principals and administrators throughout the system, are they coming up with their own steps?
No, ma'am, we are, this is consistent across the board from school to school. We met with school administration together collectively and Mr. Blackerby made it clear. We met with everyone and we all agreed. We actually, Ms. Renee, Mr. Benson and myself met with each division of principals and we collectively came up with this plan together. So it wasn't like it was something that we directed, we collectively came up with this together.
Book bags considered storage?
Yes. Yes.
And this is just for K through eight?
Yes.
Now, if someone is, that doesn't have a five oh one, a five oh four plan or IEP and they still have diabetes, can they use their phone?
What should happen at that point is there's, first of all, if a child has diabetes and they're having to check their blood sugar during the day, that is something that should be reported to the nurse. And that, I mean, in most cases, that's what happens. And that's considered a disability, a health disability, and it may require for some additional support. So to my knowledge, there aren't any situations that would fall under those auspices. And there's also law that requires that if a student has diabetes or seizures, that we have a plan in place for how we're going to help them manage that during the day. So the short answer to that question would be, we should be aware of that, if that exists. And if not, then I would certainly ask and encourage parents to please make sure that we do, so that we can make sure that we are aware and helping to manage that during the school day.
So if I have my five oh four plan, I can have my phone?
If it is explicitly in the plan, that it says that you have to use your device in order to measure it, yes.
But only for the purpose of that?
That's exactly right.
You can't be playing games and say, I'm covered.
Yes, ma'am, it is explicitly for that purpose. Now, I don't know, Ms. Renee or Mr. Benson, if you want to add anything?
We've already received, to Mr. Jackson's point, we've already received a message from a parent via Parent Square. When the initial announcement of this policy came out from the district, we've received a message and that parent got in touch with their school administrator to say, my child is diabetic. We don't fall into that category where we have a five oh four plan. And the administration's been working with that student to make sure that that student's teachers are aware. That's been very smooth.
Question, I'm kind of asking this for the, the good of the public, maybe, because it's been asked me a couple times, the whole storage areas. Some teachers can designate, they just, I'm making a statement, ask question. Some teachers can designate that just have it in your backpack, but some teachers are actually have like a hanger on the door and say, you drop your phone in there when you come in. Is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
That is accurate.
So we're giving the teacher the leeway of where they want the storage to be?
Most of our middle and high schools have, and we call them hotels, that they have in the front of their classroom where they're stored. But yes, there is that leverage to be able to make those decisions.
But we're not checking them at the door to make sure they actually put it in there.
Correct.
They're being asked to put it in there.
That's right.
Okay.
But we're not, if they have it stored away in their bookbag, we're not asking them to take it back out of their bookbag, put it in there if they.
I just wonder at some point, is there, does the policy need to be clear of either, the policy at Glen County Schools is either it's going in a hanger on the back of the door or it's going in the backpack? So that there's not some argument that would, you know, Ms. Jones wants every, I hate to use Ms. Jones, maybe there's a Ms. Jones, but.
You can say Ms. Haywood.
Ms. Jones, Ms. Haywood wants everybody to put it in the door, but Johnny says, I shouldn't have to, my storage is my backpack. Shouldn't have to worry about that, but that que, that exact question was asked of me and I was like.
I don't have to do it in Ms. Jones' class, I have to do it in Ms. Haywood's class.
So I'm wondering, at some point, should the policy maybe be tweaked a little to say, this is the storage facility? Or storage method?
Yes, sir.
A door hanger or everybody's going to use a backpack?
We can certainly take that back and I, and I think that's part of the reason why the law is written to give us this time to kind of work through those kinks and make sure we have procedures in place by January one for, you know, I, I really do. So I think that's definitely something we can take back and consider.
We have had some feedback from some parents, during open house, we had some that, you know, they, they did not want, they preferred us to allow their child to at least just keep it in their backpack rather than put it in the, in the pouch because they were afraid it was going to get stolen or which, you know, we do have classroom cameras so we can monitor that. So our answer has been, as long as you don't violate the rule, you have it out, then we're not going to search you for it and find out where it is.
I would say just store it, just tell them, just store your phone. I don't care where, just don't use it, store it.
Put it in their pocket, that's.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, that's what, that is, that is the rule, just store the phone.
Store your phone, yeah.
Because, you know, dealing with the pouches, you're going to cut off instruction time and you got to do five minutes for the bell and it just makes it probably more smoother. They just put it in the bookbag and just walk on out.
The other challenge is the, there are times during the school day where we don't have a hotel to put the phone in. When students transition from class to class, when students go to the cafeteria, we don't have multiple pockets or hotels for those types of times. At those times, that's when we are saying, like Mr. Madala said, you're going to need to store your phone because those times are included in the bell-to-bell instruction.
Do you think that we could get some sort of look in sixty days or so? Now that it's a, it's a matter of, you know, focus in our system in like sixty days at one of the meetings, could we get an update of, has it even been an issue?
Sure.
You know, how many have we had, how many phones have we had to confiscate and parents come pick up and stuff? Or is it, is it making a difference?
So maybe the nine-week break in October? Okay.
It was easiest to do.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I think it's got some time, you know, passed before we report, but I'd just love to see if, since it's such a focus this year, is it, is it making a difference?
Yes, sir, we can do that.
I will say, just being out in the schools for the past two days with students back, you'll see pockets that in some classrooms have loaded, phone, 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 phone. In other classrooms, it's a little bit more sporadic, where not everybody has their phone in the pocket. Some people have decided to store their phone in their bookbag. Other times, you'll see in the pocket, you'll see the phone, the earbud, AirPod case, the smartwatch.
The Apple Watch.
You've got everything in the pocket.
It's like going to security there.
Yes.
It is, but that's what it feels like. But so far, this, if you just talk to our staff and our teachers, they are extremely grateful that we are here tonight presenting this.
That's what I want to hear.
Yes.
This is what they're asking for. I think unanimously, we have felt across the board that this has not been an area of concern so far. Not to say it won't come, become one, but overall, we had extremely positive feedback.
Overwhelmingly. Overwhelmingly.
That's awesome.
Positive feedback.
My, my only concern is, what, what I want, you know, you all to hear, what teachers to hear, you know, I, I just want there to be consistency across the board, right?
For sure.
It's like the old dress code thing where you, you're, you've got something on inappropriate, you make it to the last block of the day and somebody finally says something to you. Well, and the only other time I see it being issued, and I'm not picking on coaches, but I mean, they handle and have to corral a lot of kids sometimes, you have forty, fifty kids in a class. Sometimes you have twenty or thirty out on the court, the rest are sitting in the stands. So I just want to make sure that all teachers, no matter what they're teaching or what they're responsible for, it's bell-to-bell.
Yes, sir.
You don't have twenty kids up in the stands on their phones while everybody else is in PE or whatever. Because they didn't dress out, they're going to sit in the stands on the phone. They need to do, I'm worried about the unproductive time, you know, that, especially in high schools. But in high schools, it's not, you're not to have them out in class either, you have them in between classes, correct?
Correct, correct.
They shouldn't be out, no matter what class it is.
That's right.
So I just want to make sure we're consistent, that's all I'm asking.
Yes.
And we'll support you, we've always done that, I think, if there's an issue. Because I think if, if parents are being honest with themselves, just like we are, we have raised fourteen teenagers, it's a good thing. You know, is it inconvenient, maybe sometimes, when you have some changes to your schedule, but it's not the end of the world. So I think if everybody's being honest with themselves, it's certainly a good thing that we do. But I just want to be consistent as we roll it out, that's all.
So as far as this being communicated to the parents and maybe even directly to the students, I'm guessing one calls or something like that, when I, I don't have a kid in schools anymore?
Yes, yes.
So I don't get those calls as of this year.
Yeah, and it's been, it's been posted on the website, we discussed it in town hall meeting, it was on the radio stations.
Yeah. So really, it hasn't been a shock to anybody that this was coming. And I don't, I feel like, and I don't even know if there's a vehicle for doing this, but letting the students know like why, a little bit of the why behind it, they probably don't care. But, you know, it's not just to be punishment, you know, it's, it's meant to help you learn the responsibility of it. But, and my other thing is just making sure that teachers feel supported in the enforcement of the policy because I think that's the hardest piece of this. I mean, I think you know how that, that goes, so, you know, as long as they're able to not lose instruction time for dealing with it too, I think that's something we need to keep in our minds as well.
Ms. Haywood shared a really nice video that we used when we rolled this out with our admin and that link then went out to principals. And you've seen that link being, that video, same video being shown as part of the class meetings and back to school because it talks exactly about that.
Okay, good.
We thought it was important to give the why, so then you know the what.
Yeah, most definitely.
Yeah.
And like I said, when it comes to the students, maybe, you know, they're, they're just dealing with the, oh, bummer. But anyway, just to kind of put the message out there, this is not just a punishment tool. So, yeah, thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Benson? So good evening again. We do have one last item while students have returned and we have officially started school. We do have one last item for our back-to-school list of software that we kind of ask for renewals every year for. And this item involves our assessment platform. For the past year, we have asked a couple of schools to pilot this program, it's Otis Assessment and Analytics. And we heard nothing but positive things from those schools that piloted last year. piloted last year. We did that pilot before we went district-wide. We also spent some time talking to some of our neighboring school districts that are, had fully implemented Otis, and they had nothing but also positive things to say. So we are requesting the purchase of Otis Assessment and Analytics. It is exactly what it is, it's an assessment platform, it's what we use to measure student learning, right? It's the test, but it's also the data warehouse, it's where we store data regarding student progress, so that there are no surprises when we get to the end of the year and we give those state assessments. The professional learning that goes along with this software has been phenomenal, we've made that part of our teachers' pre-planning activities as they've come back, and we, Ms. Renee and I, just before we walked down here this evening, had a shout-out from a teacher who's been in it, creating groups and starting to make sure that we're targeting students where they're at, with their level of, of need, so we are asking for your approval for this, for the upcoming school year.
Does this replace an existing assessment?
It does, it replaces the Power School Unify Assessment Program, and it is actually a little bit cheaper solution. We felt like it was a better product, and it, we had a little better price.
Always good.
That's good to hear.
How would, how would teachers use this? Just give me a little synopsis.
So you could go in, so the teachers will use it in several different ways. First off, if you're giving a formative assessment, okay, where you're measuring what students know, you can easily go in and create those assessments that you would normally give and collect that data, okay? Once you have that data, you'll be able to create different groups, you'll be able to look historically how students have done, so is it, is what the students, how the students perform, is that predictive of what's going to happen when they take their milestone or end of course assessment?
So what school, what school levels?
K through twelve, all school levels. So this would be, this would be involved in, in all of our buildings.
What were the pilot schools?
We used this last year at both Jane Makin and Glen Mill, and they said, "Please, let's not go back to the old way." And we did use it, I should have, I should have added, spring semester at Glen Academy. Instead of teachers spending time disaggregating the data, most of the work is done here, which, which is really nice, they can spend their time working on the lessons and other pieces. The other thing that we liked about Otis is there was an AI component to it, so you could put in a specific standard, you could ask it to create an assessment, you could ask it to differentiate that assessment for different levels of learners.
I retired too early.
So a lot of assessment creation there with those schools.
And the teachers like this, they really like this.
They've had nothing but positive feedback.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So, so the only pitfall to these things, and again, being involved in these assessments over the last twenty years, you know, when, when our teachers were doing the pre and post-test and they were developing them, sometimes the questions were just wrong, and the wrong answer was, was given. In this case, I mean, how, how do we know that if you do a twenty or thirty question assessment, I know the teacher's supposed to go back and probably review it before they submit it to, to the kids to take, but, I mean, how do we ensure that the standard that this company, wherever they're out of, is, is aligned with our Georgia standards and their teachers are, are teaching, not to the test, you know, I don't want to get off on that, but I'm not trying to give, give them the answers, but how do we know that they're aligned, especially with math and, and those sort of things that are important, that we're aligned with the Georgia standard, and they don't look at the question like, "I've never seen this before."
Yeah.
You know, twenty questions in, they go, "I, I don't know what this question is," and the assessment's kind of off.
Right, so previously, in our, in our previous assessment providers, our teachers relied more heavily on assessment banks.
Right.
You know, banks of questions that, on different topics, and you, "Oh, I'm going to create an assessment, and I'm going to just go in, I'm going to pick this question, I'm going to pick that question." And with this platform, it's a little bit different, the teachers are actually creating the assessments based upon the standard.
Okay.
So you have to tie it back to a standard.
Okay.
So there is, on the, on the front end, some, a little bit additional work, it's not just a, you know, like I said, a juicier in there, but that will require our, you know, that teacher set of eyes on what's happening.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? That, that concludes our agenda.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. I think we have land, legal, and personnel, so entertain a motion to go into executive session for all three.
A second.
So moved by Mr. Madala.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dodgen. Any discussion, all those in favor? Issue unanimous at five fifty, or maybe not, five fifty-one.